I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District. Trustees present tonight are Ms. Adela Garza, Mr. René Torres, Dr. Robert Lozano, Mr. Trey Mendez, Mr. David Oliveira. Also present is Dr. Lily Tercero, President of Texas Southmost College. Absent is Dr. Roberto Robles. Announcements? Dr. Tercero, we have any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. Item number three, consideration and approval of resolution honoring Dr. Albert A. Bostedo. Due to illness, Mrs. Olivia Bostedo cannot join us this evening. Take with the item and bring it back for consideration once she's feeling better. At this time, I would like to skip to item number 10. Item number 10 is consideration of approval of resolution honoring Mr. David Oliveira for his years of service to the Board. At this time, we would like to honor Mr. David Oliveira for his 18 years of service to Texas Southmost College District. Mr. Oliveira served as Chairman of this Board from June 1997 through 1998, and again in September 2008 through June 2010. At this time, we would like to present him with this gavel as appreciation for his time served as Chairman of the Board. If you'd like to say some words to Mr. Oliveira.
Well, David, I know we've had our differences. We had our differences, you know, over the past couple of years, but one thing that we never had was, I don't think we ever had any personal problems with each other. And, you know, the fact that we're both attorneys, we know we're going to be seeing each other for a lot of years to come. And the one thing is, I've always had respect for you because I think even though we had our differences, we were always able to talk through them and never, never really made it a personal issue. I think you've, I thank you for your service. 18 years is a long time. You know, after, after all this, you know, it's, I don't know what we're going to do without you on the Board. It's going to be kind of different seeing somebody else sitting in that chair, but I thank you for your service and, and I'll be seeing you in the courtrooms in the future. And thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chair. Dr. Lozano?
Well, David, I'm going to miss you, man. Getting to work with you on this level has been really very interesting and exciting for me. And to recognize you as a builder, a person that's really spent a lot of heart and soul on just growing up on this campus, literally growing up on this campus, but being able to leave a legacy behind with the, with the partnership that's been present, with being able to grow for your university, for our community, offering so many young people and adults desiring to better themselves. It's just quite a legacy to leave. And so the Oliveira name will always be here, always stamped here on this campus, and I think that's something you'll always be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. I've only been here four years and it's, and it's time consuming and it's not easy. And I know that, that you serve in 18 years is, I just admire that. I mean, I respect that because, like I said, four years here has been very, very difficult for me. And I know that serve in 18 years, it's, it's, it's a lifetime. And I really admire that. I admire your commitment and, and again, we've been at the opposite end of some, of some of the issues, but we did agree with, with other issues. And it's again, like Trey stated earlier, that it's never been personal. And of course, you, you and anybody else has the right to express their opinion, and you've done that, and you've done that very well. Again, we, we're going to miss you. I sincerely mean that. And we're still friends, whether it's differences of opinion or not. I've always regarded you as a friend and a friend of the family. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you, René.
David, we fought some battles together. I know I was there when you became Chair, and I was very proud, very proud. And I, and I know I texted you several messages saying, you know, you're what we need as our Chair. We have some history together. I, we're Longhorns and we, we're crazy Longhorns when football comes to mind. I consider you my friend. You've been there when I've needed you. And I think we fought for the right things. Different or not, we wanted what was best for TSC. I admire the 18 years that you put into this. And I know your, your family has a lot to do with it because they've loaned you to, to TSC. And, and I thank your mother and Susie and, and little Sofia because they've had to do without you for hours because it is time consuming. If you want to do a good job, it is time consuming. Thank you, Susie. Thank you, Ms. Oliveira. Sofia, thank you. You're beautiful. And thank you, David.
Thank you, Adela. David, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would. This, I prepared a few things as I want to thank some people and, and because I've been here 18 years, I guess that gives me the right to talk a little bit, I guess. My first memories, I guess, of this campus were, as a young, young boy coming here with my family to the library. And I remember, back then, we, you know, city didn't have a library. We, we shared with a college. And, and so we used to come here in the summers because there was no cable TV, thank God. There were two channels, I think, and my dad would bring all six of us here and we would, my brothers and I would always check out the maximum number of books. In fact, I have a confession to make. We, I think the maximum number you could check out was like 20 every two weeks. And I always wanted to read more. And so my brothers and I devised a scheme where we would slip books out through the mail slot at the front of the library. We always returned them, but, but the librarian was really strict and she wouldn't let us go over the limit. So Victor and I, we would always want to, we'd want to read more. And, and so we would, we would slip books out the front, but we always returned them and, and, but those are my earliest memories of this campus. And then when my dad, you know, became President here in 1972, it was God, you know, perhaps, I don't know, the proudest and happiest moment, I think, of our family, of the Oliveira's family's life because it was such a tremendous achievement. He made so many sacrifices. My mom made so many sacrifices taking care of six children while my dad was working on his PhD. She taught at Russell School and made $600 a month and supported not just her six children, but her husband in Austin as well. So he made incredible sacrifices as, as many others in this community have to get their education. And then he came back and he got to fulfill his dream and, and become a college president. And so I can remember coming to campus with him and, and watching him do his work. And I can remember coming here as a student, some of my most wonderful memories and are the time I spent on this campus and, and all the wonderful professors and faculty here that, that I got to experience. When I returned to Brownsville in 1988, I remember thinking, what can I give back to this community that has given me so much? What can I do to serve this community? And it didn't take me long to realize that I, I wanted to be back on this campus. And my dad would have wanted me back on this campus. And, and so I ran for trustee in, in 1994. And, and 18 years later, I'm now attending my, my last meeting. When I first got here, there was one library that we shared with the city. There was a lot of cramped classrooms, old classrooms. There was no rec center. We had an old gym that everybody crowded into to, to go to physical education. And we had an old rec center that, that could barely, you know, seat 50 students. But, you know, that all began to change, I think, in, in the 90s when we, we, the trustees, I guess, dared to, to try something innovative. And we did the partnership that, that allowed us to do so many things. And then it all began to even, to get even better when in 1996, when we became a four-year university here, which is one of my dad's dreams, is that someday there would be a four-year university in this community that this community desperately needed. 18 years after our first run for Board, we now have one of the most beautiful campuses in Texas. It, we have a state-of-the-art classrooms, a rec center, a fine arts center. And there's a lot of people to thank for that, but most of all, I have to thank the community, the taxpayers who voted a tax increase so that their students, their children could enjoy first-class facilities that, that the rest of Texas, that the rest of the children of Texas, you know, have come to take for granted. And I also know that it wouldn't have been possible without the courage of, of the trustees back then, of the staff, the faculty, the, the administrators that got behind this endeavor and, and put all their heart, all their time into becoming a four-year university and to fighting in the legislature to get that status. There are too many people to thank, as I sit here, but I'm going to try and, and name a few. I guess I want to thank, you know, the, obviously, the, my board members here today. Some of you have only had the privilege of serving with for a couple of years. While it's been contentious at times, I do agree that, you know, I certainly have long gotten over any dispute and I don't hold any grudges or bad, ill will or bad feelings toward any of you all here. And I wish you the best in the future, but also would be remiss if I didn't thank a number of the trustees I had the privilege of serving with over 18 years. Mary Rose Cardenas, who was Chairman, Chairperson when I came to the Board of Trustees, Chester Gonzalez, Eduardo Campanano, who provided us with great, all his great knowledge of budgets and planning, and Rosemary Breedlove and, and Dr. Robles, of course, my dear friend who could not be here tonight. It's been an incredible ride. It's been an incredible privilege to serve with all those, those great trustees. And then also many of the staff that I've had a chance to work with here that have always been there for us. Kim and Max are here tonight. Kim, thank you. I've seen you come to this campus as a young lady and seen you, you grow into the position you hold today. And I thank you for all that you've done for us. But also many of those at UT Brownsville, Rosemary Martinez, Michael Putinat, Wayne Moore, Dr. Martine, who I got to work with, and many others who, who, who have helped every step of the way and who I will be eternally grateful to. Last but not least, I would like to thank Dr. Juliette Garcia, who I've had the privilege of working with for 18 years. What a, what a leader. I know now why my dad called her up some 30 years ago and when he found out she was back in the Valley and teaching at Panham and told her that she had to come work over here and why he tried so hard to get her over here. And thankfully, he did. Because of her great vision, her leadership, this campus has, has just evolved over the years to something incredible. And the students of this community will, will benefit in the years to come because of her vision and because of her hard work and because of her contacts and the respect that she gets in, in the college community. And so I, I will always be grateful to her and for all that I, that she taught me and for the, the privilege I had of working side by side with her on many things. I'd also like to thank the University of Texas system. I, I had plenty of battles with them, plenty of fights with them, both in the legislature and in meetings and some, some yelling matches. Didn't always get along with every Board, but, but by and large, you know, most of the Regents, you know, cared about this place and, and did what they could to help us. In particular, specifically, I remember Jim Huffines always trying to, to reach out and help us where we can. I also had the privilege of working with several chancellors who, who loved this place as well and did what they could to help us succeed. Dr. Bill Cunningham, who helped us become a four-year university after initially trying to talk us out of it. At the end of the day, though, he was in our corner and he helped us. But last but not least, Dr. Francisco Sigadoa, who has a tremendous love for South Texas. And even though we're not in a partnership anymore, I'm confident that he's going to do what he can to help Texas Southmost College and to, to help this, this, this new path that we're taking or to help this new endeavor that we're, we are on become a successful one. And so I, I thank the University of Texas system for their generosity and their assistance along the way. Finally, I guess I, and I would, I have to thank the people I care about the most. My mom, who, who's put up with me for 55, 56 years. I just turned 56. And who's been a big reason behind the success of my life. And, you know, it's funny, I, she thought she was getting rid of me when I moved out of the house when I was 18 years old and I'm living back at home again because we sold our house. And it's been, it's been a fun time. But Mom, thank you for everything. To my beautiful wife, Susie, who's been with me a number of these years, and especially the last two, which were very tough, thank you for being there to listen to me and to let me cry on your shoulder and to vent when I needed to. And to my daughter, Sophia, who also has attended many college events and has always been a good sport about coming to things. And also to my other children who couldn't be here today, my son, Ryan, who's in veterinary school, my son Tyler, who graduated from UT on Saturday, and my daughter Gabby, who graduated from UT last year and is, is going to be entering nursing school shortly. So to my family, thanks for putting up with me the last 18 years and thanks for supporting me and that, and thanks for allowing me to spend so much time away from you and work on this, this labor of love, the university that I so much, you know, so much care about and so much love. And to the trustees, thank you and good luck to you and good luck to the new trustees that will be serving. I wish nothing but the best for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'll excuse me, I'm going to step out now. When Mary Rose Cardenas resigned, I remember she stepped out as soon as she, she gave her speech. I thought, why did she do that? I know why now. This is a good time.
Just let me read the resolution for you and we'll approve your resolution.
Okay. And then I'll leave.
That'll be a good moment. I will now read the resolution honoring Mr. Oliveira for his 18 years of service on the Board of Trustees. It reads, "The State of Texas, County of Cameron, Texas Southmost College District, Resolution. A resolution honoring the service of trustee David Oliveira. Whereas David G. Oliveira was elected to serve on the Texas Southmost College Board of Trustees in 1994 and then re-elected to two additional terms. And whereas David G. Oliveira has served as a passionate advocate of higher education for the past 18 years and has devoted his service to the benefit of Texas Southmost College students and our community. And whereas David G. Oliveira during his tenure on the Board was elected by his colleagues to serve two terms as Chair and one term as Vice Chair of the Board. And whereas David G. Oliveira served Texas Southmost College throughout the years through his service on the Business Affairs Partnership Committee, Academic Affairs Partnership Committee, Student Affairs Partnership Committee, Board Bond Advisory Committee, Physical Facilities Committee, and the Partnership Advisory Committee. And whereas David G. Oliveira was engaged in numerous community service efforts, always promoted access to higher education opportunities. And whereas David G. Oliveira is a native of Brownsville and attended Texas Southmost College. And whereas David G. Oliveira's father, the late Dr. Arnulfo L. Oliveira, was President of Texas Southmost College and Pan American University at Brownsville from 1971 to 1977. And whereas each member of this Board believes it is a special honor to recognize the service of our colleague and friend, David G. Oliveira, upon this occasion. Now, therefore, be it resolved, this 21st day of May 2012, that the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District hereby commends and pays tribute to David Oliveira for his dedication, commitment, and service to the college and the community, passed and adopted this 27th, I mean, 21st day of May 2012." So now I am looking for a motion.
Will you make a motion that we pass this resolution, sir?
To adopt the resolution honoring David Oliveira for his years of service to the Board. I've got a motion by Dr. Lozano, a second by Mr. Torres. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Congratulations, David.
Thank you.
Ms. Oliveira, I just want to thank you on behalf of the many, many students, thousands of students that you served during your tenure. Thank you very much. Thank you for welcoming me when I arrived. I really appreciate that and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
And I wish the same to you and all of you.
Thank you.
God bless. God bless. I'd also like to take item number 11 out of order. That's consideration of approval of resolution honoring Dr. Roberto Robles for his years of service to the Board. We would also like to honor Dr. Roberto Robles for his 14 years of service to the Board. We are presenting Dr. Robles with a plaque in honor of, of service. Dr. Robles could not be here this evening. This gift will be forwarded to him. I will now read the resolution. It reads, "The State of Texas, County of Cameron, Texas Southmost College District, Resolution. A resolution honoring the service of trustee Dr. Roberto Robles. Whereas Dr. Roberto Robles was elected to serve on Texas Southmost College Board of Trustees in 1998 and then re-elected to two additional terms. And whereas Dr. Roberto Robles for the past 14 years has been dedicated to promoting the arts in the community, serving as the founder of the Brownsville Society of the Performing Arts, and believing strongly that all people should have the opportunity to experience high-quality educations, education, performances, and programming in this field. And whereas Dr. Roberto Robles has served as a passionate advocate for higher education and has devoted his service to the benefit of Texas Southmost College students and the community. And whereas Dr. Roberto Robles during his tenure on the Board was elected by his colleagues to serve one term as Secretary and one term as Vice Chair of the Board. And whereas Dr. Roberto Robles served Texas Southmost College throughout his years through his service on the Academic Affairs Partnership Committee, Student Affairs Partnership Committee, Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Committee, Board Bond Advisory Committee, and the Partnership Advisory Committee. And whereas Dr. Roberto Robles was born in Ramiville, was one of the 14 children of a migrant farm worker family and attended Texas Southmost College. And whereas each member of this Board believes it is a special honor, a special honor to recognize the service of our colleague and friend, Dr. Roberto Robles, upon this occasion. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 21st day of May 2012, that the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District hereby commends and pays tribute to Dr. Roberto Robles for his dedication, commitment, and service to the college and the community, passed and adopted on this 21st day of May 2012."
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this, pass this resolution as written?
I've got a motion by Dr. Lozano.
A second.
A second by Ms. Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Would anyone like to say anything?
If he's watching out there somewhere, I'd like to thank him for his service to Texas Southmost College. I know he, he did care a lot about the students of this community and I'm sure he'll be around in the future in some manner to make sure that students get a good quality education.
And Roberto, I appreciate the legacy that you've left here as well, working on the Board for many years, working with the Board and the partnership and Texas Southmost College and with the performing arts building and doing so much in your life for this community. And thank you very much.
I'd also, for the record, like to thank Dr. Robles for his passion and his commitment to his years of service on the Board.
I like to do that as well. He has been committed to, to the students and I think he did it and put in a lot of time. And TSC, UTB meant a lot to him. I thank him for his service.
Okay. The plaque will be presented to him later, right? Okay. Moving on to what is public comments? Do we have people sign up for public comments? Yes, we do. I call on Mr. David Marquez to speak.
Good evening, trustees, Chairman, and Dr. Tercero and Aguero. As most of you know me, my name is David Marquez and I represent the staff through the Staff Senate. I'm the elected president and my term ends in a few months. But I'd like to formally congratulate the, the outgoing members of the TSC Board. In fact, that was the main reason why we were here tonight is to thank Mr. Oliveira and Dr. Robles for the service that they have given to this community and to the students. And also at the same time, congratulate the incoming members of the TSC and wish them well and hope that they continue with that passion. But the other thing that I'd like to, to do is congratulate you, the Board, for your recent decision on continuing with all the programs. Because these programs have been available to the students of this community and it's very important that they continue to enjoy the wide range of options that they've had. And we hope that soon you will consider expanding those offerings. And please continue to work deliberate and thoughtful and ensuring the success of Texas Southmost College because it's very important to the, to the students of this community. But with it, with that, I'd like to say that this campus is filled with hundreds of dedicated people, a lot of faculty, a lot of staff. Students, of course, are very dedicated. Students, of course, are very dedicated, who at some point did well with an opportunity, and they overcame challenges. And they like to pass on what they've learned to others. In essence, I believe that's what education is all about. Pass on to others what you have learned and prepare them to take it even further if you give them, if they give you the opportunity to do so, right? When the talks of the separation began, we were all beset by confusion and uncertainty. And some things are a bit clearer now, and yet some things are still as uncertain as they were fifteen months ago or more. But there has never been any doubt about the work that we do and why we do it, whether that is TSC, or UTB, or the faculty member, or the staff member. It's always been about the students and ensuring their success and providing those opportunities for continuing education, a higher education here in South Texas, in our area. And there's one more thing that you can be completely sure of, that when it comes to the time for you to fill some of those staff and faculty positions that you will need, you can count on a force that is skilled, dedicated, and most importantly, at the ready, to push forward the mission of helping to educate our community if you give us the opportunity. So with that, I just want to thank you for your service and hope that we can continue to be in the, in the discussions, and we're at your service in any way that you feel that we can help you. Please do not hesitate to call upon us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Next item, mission statement. Texas Southmost College is a comprehensive, open admissions, public, community college whose mission comports with state statute, subchapter A, section 130. Texas Southmost College offers programs leading to certificates of completion and associate's degrees, developmental education to prepare students for college-level work, occupational and technical programs to prepare students for immediate employment, academic courses of study to develop the core skills, understanding, and knowledge appropriate for baccalaureate programs, and continued education, counseling, guidance, adult literacy, and personal enrichment. Texas Southmost College advances the economic and social development, enhances the quality of life, encourages respect for the environment, cultivates personal enrichment, and expands knowledge in service to its community. It convenes the cultures of its community and fosters an appreciation for the unique heritage of the Lower Rio Grande Valley. It provides academic leadership in the intellectual, social, cultural, and economic life of the region it serves. Texas Southmost College places excellence in teaching and learning at the core of its commitment. It seeks to help students at all levels develop the skills which will sustain lifelong learning while respecting the dignity of each learner and the needs of the entire community. Item number six, consideration and approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 3, 2012, and the regular meeting of April 19, 2012, and the special meeting of April 30, 2012.
Do we take them individually or as a whole?
We can take them as a whole. Everybody agrees.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve them.
We've got a motion by Mr. Mendez to approve the minutes.
Second.
A second by Mr. Torres. Any discussion?
I think I need to abstain. I missed one of those meetings.
Okay. Can you clarify which one it was?
I don't remember.
Are you going to abstain from all of them, or?
I'll abstain from all of them.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention. Motion is approved. Item number seven, consideration and approval of canvassing of results of the Texas Southmost College District elections. I call on Mr. Chet Lewis, Vice President of Administration and Finance, to present the item. Mr. Lewis?
Chairman, Rendell, Trustees, and President Tercero. On May 12, 2012, an election was held for Place Six and Place Seven for the Board of Trustees. According to the election results, Ronaldo Garcia, or Dr. Garcia, was one Place Six, and Ramon Champion Inahosa was the leader in Place Seven. And these are the two gentlemen that would be duly elected to the Board of Trustees. This is the unofficial canvas report, which is in your packet, and we would like to ask that you would make a motion to approve the canvassing of the results for the Texas Southmost College District election.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the canvassing of results of the Texas Southmost College District elections. We've got a motion by Ms. Garza, a second by Mr. Torres. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next item, consideration and approval of order declaring results of the Texas Southmost College District election. Mr. Lewis?
For the same election, we're asking for a motion to approve the order declaring the results of the Texas Southmost College District election. This is, may seem a little redundant, but the first one was accepting the information for the balloting, and this would be the actual declaration of the winners. We have no other provisional ballots, so this will be final.
So a motion by Ms. Garza to approve the order of declaration results of the Texas Southmost College District election, a second by Mr. Mendez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Congratulations to the new trustees. I know we have one in the audience. I saw Dr. Garcia back there, so congratulations.
Congratulations, Dr. Garcia.
Yes, congratulations. I hope you're as dedicated to the Board as you were to, as a member of the screening committee and the President Screening Committee. Thank you for your service already.
Next item, consideration and approval of proposal for information technology consulting and outsourcing services. I call on Dr. Lee Tercero, President, to present this item. Dr. Tercero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Over the last few months, we've been working diligently on identifying and evaluating various approaches in regard to the implementation of the college's technology. As you know, we are under very unique circumstances, and so we was, we found it very necessary for us to examine some of the unique approaches that would allow us to move forth and implement all the tasks that needed to be implemented in time to start the, the college is Fall of 2013. Tonight, Mr. Chet Lewis is going to provide you with an overview of all that work that we have been undertaking, along with a recommendation on how we recommend to you that we move forth with this most important task. It's very exciting, because we are strategically positioned to create an institution that, that will have state-of-the-art technology. We are in a position to establish an institution that is going to be focused on student success. It's going to be focused on completion, and it's going to be focused on continuous improvement. And the way we're going to be able to measure that, the way we're going to be able to show you and the community that we're doing that is through the technology that we hope to implement. And so we're excited. We're going to implement this throughout the institution. And so I would like Chet to please move forth with presenting the summary report on the work that we've undertaken. I hope that you will be pleased with what we've done.
Thank you, Dr. Tercero. The information technology services is probably one of the most important, especially for the back-office functions that we're going to need to proceed and move forward with as we establish Texas Southmost College as an individual standalone college. It's, the technology services are the backbone of providing services. They keep track of when the students are going to be enrolling in classes. It's going to provide technology that will assist them in learning. It takes care of all your accounting, finance, voice. There's all kinds of aspects. So this is a very important decision, and we need to make sure we get it right the first time. It provides a lot of essential services to the students and to faculty and to the staff. And one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is we provide a seamless and accurate migration of data and course information, including the academic history, which is currently managed by UTB. Now, the technology goals we have listed, it's going to be on two slides, these are the technology goals that we identified in the RFP, but I just wanted to go ahead and reiterate what all these are. And before we go and list them individually, basically, we're looking for someone to come in and help us manage, make recommendations, and help us implement, and potentially outsource all the technology aspects of the college. So we're looking at things like network infrastructure and the services that it provides in relationship to video services, voice, and data. It would be the administrative applications to support enrollment and the business service transactions that occur. We also, we're going to be looking at business intelligence, because one of the things you always hear about is data-driven decisions. Well, we want to build a technology that actually provides that information that the management team here can use to, to actually have data-driven decisions and have accountability in, at the classroom, and also in the staffing and with the faculty. Technology also includes web services. This becomes the portal where students have their, their first introduction and access to trying to be admitted, registered classes, financial aid, advising. There's all kinds of aspects that the web will be used for, and also be interfacing with the community through the web services. Another area of technology would include library services that helps with the teaching and learning and also provides the resources to our, our students and our faculty. We'll also be looking for technology goals in learning management systems, or LMS systems. And this is helping out with technology-mediated instruction, distance learning, and also the professional development of the staff and faculty. And finally, the user support services that help for virtual and on-campus help and assistance. So basically, our help desk. As we examined the potential options, as we moved forward in our different transition phases, we looked at three different areas. The first one was to develop everything in-house, to hire people, which would mean that we would end up having to buy a lot of potential computers, and we would develop everything or go through the processes internally to determine the things that we need. The second possible solution for a strategic IT option that we looked at was looking at shared services. So this would be basically partnering with somebody who already has an established system. This could be UTB, another community college, or even another company or individual that would have similar technology needs that we could share and potentially gain efficiencies. And the third we looked at is looking at the concept of doing outsourced services. So we'd like to talk about the advantages and disadvantages of these three potential In-house services, one of the advantages is we have managerial control. Essentially, all the employees would directly answer from us. We would be driving the committees, and we would be going through and determining what solutions we're looking for and develop those all in-house. And of course, once you do that, the personnel who learn and are involved with the process gain knowledge, and that knowledge will reside at the college as those employees would continue on with us. Another advantage is it's potentially more cost-effective. If you designed everything right and you're efficient, and you go through and do things prudently, and you leverage your internal resources, you can gain some cost advantages. Some of the disadvantages of doing in-house services would be that there's significant upfront and continual investment in equipment and personnel. If we were to start everything up brand-new, we would have to look at buying servers. We'd have to figure out where the connections would occur. We'd have to be training staff to make sure that they understood whatever system we're looking at, because we could be potentially looking at a number of systems that people in the area are not familiar with. That leads us to a second disadvantage, that sometimes it's difficult to attract and retain qualified personnel. If we were to move to a different solution and there aren't a lot of people locally or even within the state that have a lot of expertise in that area, it would be difficult to bring them in and involve them into this process and get them hired. Another disadvantage is the extensive continuing education requirements for IT personnel. IT training is very costly, and one of the disadvantages that we learned from a lot of other community colleges is sometimes when you spend a lot and you invest in those personnel, they become more qualified, but sometimes then they leave. And so there's that constant training and that costly training that needs to occur. And the last disadvantage that we wanted to point out is extensive time commitment by all the college staff relating to planning and actually doing the implementation. We have a lot of things going on right now, and so if we were to try to be successful by having classes by Fall of 2013 and try and do, get all the technology solutions implemented, it's a daunting task that we're looking at. And looking at shared services, again, we are looking at the advantages and disadvantages that with shared services, you have the opportunity to be efficient, and so therefore you could end up with some cost savings on how you're running your operations. And one of the advantages that sticks out is the fact that you would have an established system. You know, for example, if we were to partner with, let's say, TSTC, they have systems that are up and running, the personnel are in place, and so the focus of the migration would be to how to take care of our needs as well as taking care of their needs. And that would lead to less implementation risk, you know, as we were moving through a very quick timeline, and even though it's a little more than a year out, it's, it's a very fast timeline from an IT standpoint to implement a number of systems. So if you were sharing that, that service with somebody else, there would be less risk as we move forward. Some of the disadvantages, we lose some of the control, not just from a managerial standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint. If somebody else was managing that system, then they would usually have first say as to, you know, what they're doing, and also when they made changes, we wouldn't necessarily know, we wouldn't have complete control of those costs, because they would be implementing those costs in relationship to what they're doing, and we also don't know what they would ask us to invest to enhance our capabilities of providing services for two, two organizations. There's also the perception of loss of security and confidentiality. This is an issue we looked at, is, you know, you, you move your data out to a different location, that there's a potential that somebody could hack your data or somebody has access to the security. Now, one of the things that we also investigated, the fact that you, you have the same type of risk no matter where you are. If you have something in-house versus you've gone to somebody that you've outsourced something or you're sharing your information, that, I think we hear about security breaches all the time. So I, I think as long as you're cognizant of that issue and you plan around it, that you could mitigate some of that disadvantage. Another disadvantage is that there's extensive coordination is needed to ensure that the college's needs would be met. We would have one entity that has an IT governance structure, so we would have to make sure that we had our needs serviced as well. Another disadvantage is the established systems customization could negatively impact the college's operations and expectations. And again, this is going back to the, what I talked about, that we want to be data-driven. We want to make sure that we have the right information to be efficient and to run lean as a college, and hopefully all those results will translate into us being able to lower our tuition fees. But if another organization isn't heading in that same direction, or they're trying to do something with the system, we may not get the correct information that we're looking for, or the expectations that we would have from our technology solutions. So essentially, we would be competing with their resources for needs and wants. The final disadvantage we identified was the potential for the partner entity to focus on their students' needs. Again, as they're looking at what their students want or need, it may not be the same thing that you, as the Board, would like to do also. We spent a little more time on the outsourced services, so I have two slides. The first slide is going to focus on the advantages of outsourcing. It allows the college to focus on core activities, and what we're talking about there is there's a lot of things that are going to have to happen in the next year as we continue to evaluate programs, do estimations, build budgets, look for student learning outcomes. There's all kinds of things that we're working towards, and if we have this, if this is outsourced, this will allow the management team to focus on the other areas by bringing in experienced team. This is, I mean, one of the strongest advantages of outsourcing. We can bring a team of individuals that not only have experience in one or two areas, but in just about every aspect of technology, and that, that's how we built an RFP. When we were looking at this, we're trying to make sure that we saw somebody that knew about all the current technology needs and also was also familiar with community colleges and universities and how they work from a funding standpoint, all the issues with financial aid, all the issues with admissions, advising, how they handle classes from a distance learning standpoint. So bringing all that expertise will allow us the ability to do this right the first time. Another advantage is gives us immediate scalable solutions to address current and future needs. And the key word there is scalable. The fact that, that as we go forward, you know, we can produce estimations of what we think our enrollment is, but until we have a couple of years of history, we're not going to know exactly where we're going to settle out as far as enrollment. So by having things outsourced, if we need to get more bandwidth, or we need to add more servers, if it's outsourced, then the other company utilizes their resources versus us having to go out, purchase, making sure everything works perfectly, and then also we have someone else who would be able to manage that process for us and help us to adapt. There's the potential, again, for cost savings due to efficiencies, and these efficiencies that we identified were more focused on the fact that if you bring someone who's experienced and also understands technology, has been through numerous implementations, that they, they're going to help us follow the best road to head down. going to help us follow the best road to head down. And because if we do something like that, we can develop our efficiencies upfront rather than trying to correct them a number of years in the future. So this avoids extensive upfront investment in equipment if we move to things like cloud technology. Again, if we moved, you know, an enterprise system or a learning management system, offsite or data storage, taking advantage of cloud technology or having your IT sources outsourced in a different location, have some advantages of not having that data center specifically here on campus. One of the things that also allows us to do is that we wouldn't have to worry about trying to retrofit some buildings to adapt to processes that we're trying to implement very quickly. If it's outsourced, you have areas that they're already set up to handle data retention, they're already running similar type programs, and we would be able to leverage that advantage. It would improve the continuity of operations if we had a disaster, as we all know and as we purchase hurricane insurance, we are vulnerable to hurricanes down here. And by having a number of your services outsourced, it assists in your business continuity plans. It also preserves the option of bringing the solutions in-house sometime in the future. This solution, as we look at it, is more adaptable. You know, with that scalability, we can go up, we can bring things back, but at some point, if we look at a technology solution and decide, no, I think we want to do this in-house, we still have that option in the future. One of the struggles you see with a lot of colleges or universities or even businesses at that point is they evaluate technology and cloud-type technology, they have a sunk cost. They've got systems they've invested in, they've got people that they've trained, and the decision is if I've already invested this much money and the system's already running, how can I afford to go to this other venue and gain the advantages? Well, we're in a unique situation that we don't own the systems, we don't have the servers, we don't have the switches, we don't have the routers, and so we can evaluate this from day one. And so again, it gives us the opportunity to get it right. And also, and probably most importantly, from an advantage standpoint, as we try to proceed and have classes by 2013, this is probably one of the best paths to accelerate and ensure that we're functional from that backbone from technology. Some of the disadvantages is you can lose some management control, not as much I think as if you had a shared service, but you still have a partner that you're going to be receiving input from and again, you know, there's a dynamic there. So you lose some of your control, but again, we still maintain more control than in a shared service environment. It may require more investment beyond the contracted services. Sometimes when we have a contract, people tend to manage around that contract. They're specifically only going to do certain aspects and anything else that pops up, you end up having to pay additional fees for. Well, one of the things that we envisioned in this, as we looked at an RFP or moved forward, that we wanted to make sure that we focused on a concept that had more of a fixed fee and that way we could focus on the quality of the service rather than worrying about the fact that, you know, there's an aspect that may be missing. So there's a disadvantage if you have a firm that's focusing specifically on that contract itself and so if we were to move forward with this option, we would want to make sure that our contract is structured to avoid this disadvantage. Again, the security and confidentiality issues, again, when you have somebody that's handling your data, you know, there's that perception, but again, I don't think that's a significant disadvantage because that also exists, you know, within any of these structures. And finally, the last disadvantage is the process could potentially receive resistance from existing functions. Anytime you change something or introduce a new idea, sometimes people resist that concept, but we again have the advantage that we're not fighting an existing system that we're running ourselves because we're investigating all the options at this point. Some additional thoughts is we have an opportunity, again, as we look at outsourcing, to bring in experienced leadership. And this is important because we need to make sure that as we start up the college that we do this right and we've got one time to get this right. And we want to make sure that it's up and running, so we need to make sure that we have the proper support and the proper guidance and recommendations to move forward to get all of our technology solutions implemented in the right fashion. And again, this is to the benefit of our students and how our organization would run. And we want to make sure that we also, again, focus on success and accountability. We also are going to need to develop a college-wide technology plan so that once we have implemented this, that we stay current. You know, it doesn't do any good to be state-of-the-art and then 20 years ago, you're still running the same PCs that are using cassettes to keep track of your data. So we want to make sure that we're constantly giving our students an advantage by having good technology and we take advantage of those from efficiency standpoints and also from a costing standpoint. But at the same time, that plan needs to address appropriate use of our systems, needs to look at the proper access of who would have access to our systems, and again, address all the privacy and security concerns. So given the most viable option, we proceeded to move forward with doing an RFP to focus on outsourcing and again, we wanted to make sure it was an all-accomplishing approach that looked at finding a partner who understood community colleges, who understood technology and who has been through implementations, who could help us and also take advantage of outsourcing opportunities and cloud-type service opportunities. We had two respondents who responded to the RFP in time. I wasn't surprised that we only had two because given the requirements and the expertise that we were wanting, I didn't envision that there was a lot of consulting firms out there that would have this level of expertise. We did receive a third bid that was not compliant, but they had called me and said that they were willing to come in and do evaluation over the next three months or so and to help us look at what we may possibly need. That's a great option if we had more time. The problem with this is, again, you know, normally if you did a conversion of an existing system, usually you want to plan a minimum of 18 months and we're talking about starting up some systems from the ground and we want to make sure that they're up and running, not just by fall of 2013 because in order to be running by fall of 2013 admitting students, we need to have portal access on the web and we need to have financial aid up and running, we need to have admissions, we need to have advising up and running. And so there's a lot of aspects to what we're looking at. So of the two bids, we had, one was from Dynamic Campus and the other one was Strata Information Group. And the Strata Information Group, I don't think they spent as time, as much time trying to understand what our proposal was because they put forth a pricing that basically identified that, well, if you need two people, here's what it's going to cost, and if you need a couple more people, this is what it's going to cost. And when I had some further conversations with them, they asked me, well, how many people do you think you need? And I said, we need as many people as it takes to do the job. You know, we're looking for somebody to come in and manage this for us on a fixed-fee basis. And they, after learning a little bit more about our situation, they actually have pulled their proposal out and offered that, again, like the other company, if we want to spend two or three months, they would help us investigate this, but without spending more time. They didn't feel like they could provide something that was in a fixed-fee type pricing. Now, one of the things that was very appreciative of the Dynamic Campus bid is the fact that they actually came forward and spent a lot of time getting to know us, they came here on their own expense and spent time trying to understand what was going on with technology before they responded. So we would like to recommend tonight that, based on the review of the proposals and the investigation that we did, that we recommend that you would engage the services at Dynamic Campus to help us implement our college information technology solutions. Dr. Sarah, would you like to add anything?
Yes, Mr. Rendon, board members, I sincerely believe we have a firm that we're recommending to you that is fully committed to ensuring that TSC is successful in its implementation of its technology. They have a strong reputation. I have actually spoken with my fellow, some fellow presidents, spoke to another one even this morning again, and they believe that it's a firm that has a very strong reputation, well-known in the state. So they've worked with both community colleges and universities. So I think we have a wonderful partnership in the making. We have two representatives here with us today from the company. Mr. Mike Gluppi, CEO of Dynamic Campus, is with us and Mr. Richard Medaw, who's the Vice President of Dynamic Campus. I have asked him to present a short summary of the proposed work plan so you can get a better feel of what we're going to be doing and we'll be glad to answer any questions after that. Mr. Medaw, would you please proceed?
Thank you, President Sarah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you tonight the proposal that we submitted to Texas Southmost College. First, I'd like to tell you just a few brief things about Dynamic Campus. We all come from a higher education background. I spent 23 years working for community colleges and state universities. That is typical of everyone in our company. We have implemented the technology solutions that we are going to discuss and propose to Southmost and we're willing to and able to entertain any change that they want. We have the competencies to deal with any local issues that arise that direct Southmost to pick another solution other than our top recommendation. I want to let you know that we are based in Austin, Texas. Our plan is to move our people here that will work on this so they'll become residents of the community for the duration of the contract. We're anticipating about 17 folks moving here. We will first try to hire people from the community because when we can, it's cheaper for us and better for you because we save the moving expense. We also have a team of on-demand folks that have particular expertise that may be needed on a short-term basis. Mr. Lewis mentioned earlier a business intelligence solution. One of the key things in implementing one of those solutions correctly is to architect it correctly. And we have a business architect, intelligence architect that will come, spend time, architect it, then leave. The architecture's different than the build-out of it. And so we have those particular types of skill sets that we can lend to Texas Southmost on as-needed basis when they're needed without Southmost really even needing to know that they require that skill. We have been in business since 2000. We have about 60 clients, all higher education. We're only focused on higher education and we sell no products. We have no relationship with a hardware or vendor or a software vendor and that allows us to recommend the best mix of solutions for the college rather than the ones that we happen to have in our portfolio. Many of us have also worked for the software vendors at some point in time, so we know these solutions very well and we have implemented these solutions at other institutions. We began with the technology goals that Mr. Lewis iterated for you a bit ago, so I won't go through them all again. We're very excited about this opportunity at Texas Southmost because it is unique. It's unique in that most of the, in all of our other engagements, we walk in the door and we have to retrofit new, more modern solutions to old technology and we have to do it in an incremental way and manage the change. And oftentimes, that change management is actually more difficult than the technical implementation of the solution. What we are excited about here is that we have a chance to start without, you know, moving forward with that foundation, we can start anew and that is very interesting and intriguing for us. And we think it offers a lot of potential for Texas Southmost to be a leader in the implementation of proven technology solutions. So our goals that we, our presentation and our proposal are based on are the ones that came out of the college's RFP and I would like to walk you through at a very high level the approach that we have recommended in our RFP. First and foremost, you're on a very quick timeline. There is not a lot of time to waste so that you can be up and running for students and faculty and staff to use your systems in time for fall of 2013 enrollment. The first thing that's important is to have network services, ways to communicate, ways to move data, ways to share voice and video through a network service. And one of the challenges here is that, you know, you're already wired in your buildings but you're not wired separately from the university. So one of the solutions that we've explored at a very high level with Texas Southmost is trying to use a cloud infrastructure along with the present campus infrastructure because the cloud delivery of services and that infrastructure is much quicker, which is, and this is the foundation that everything would be built upon. Mr. Lewis addressed the idea of a cloud-based data center, which is basically a remote data center. There are a number of these commercial data centers, most, almost every bank uses one of these data centers. They're very secure, they have redundant power sources, they have backup systems, they're hardened buildings, they withstand most kinds of disasters that will hit them, and they have redundancy in other locations. The building a redundant information technology infrastructure for any college is very expensive. In the case of using a cloud-based data center, you actually just make it available on demand for a fee because you're not really using it most of the time. So it's just sitting out there and you share the ability to use it with others, so it's more like an insurance policy rather than actually having to build a copy of it yourself. Once that is determined, the data center is determined, then we need to look at what are the services we can deliver via the cloud. And by the cloud, all I'm really speaking of is a protected internet connection. That's all that really is. It's a fancy word for piecing together a lot of places on the internet in a secure connection environment so that you can take advantage of the services. One of those services is a data center. Another one is establishing your own phone system without putting $2 or $3 million into a telephone system, which is what it would normally cost for an institution, but you can actually use these virtual phone systems that are on the internet and establishing video and voice, video and data communications over that. And that would be in a secure manager, manner. The first solution to really be delivered is a website. It's the gateway to the college. It's important that students, prospective students in your community have a way of looking at Texas Southmost, know what Texas Southmost is doing, know what the college offers, what programs of study and how to get access to the services. So the first thing we'd focus on is putting together a website. We're not designers. We'll work with a design team picked by Texas Southmost, but we will build the infrastructure and the navigation scheme that is behind the website. The second and very important choice, because it's a long-term choice and it's an expensive choice, is the choice of administrative software. What solution should the college use to admit students, to register students, to pay employees? These solutions are very complicated, they're integrated, and higher education is unique in the student services that it provides its students. Businesses do all the financial transactions that colleges do. They do the human resources and payroll transactions, maybe a little differently than colleges, but they still do them. But only colleges and higher education have the student services and the enrollment services aspect of it. And that complicates the selection of administrative software suite because you want to make sure that functions like advising are taken care of. So what we propose to do is to walk through the selection of that software together with the college administration to pick the best solutions that are out there. The same is true of library solutions. You know, to gain accreditation, you have to have the capability of getting access to library resources and there are ways to do that quickly using technology. And then also, Mr. Lewis mentioned a learning management system. This is a way that students at a distance can take courses or even review course content that they sat in in a lecture earlier that day. They can go home and listen to the lecture and actually see a PowerPoint presentation like this, sync to the voice, and also see notes that were taken via these, some of these learning management systems. And finally, a user support via Help Desk. When we talk about Help Desk, we're not just talking about someplace to call and you get a solution. What we're talking about is supporting users with a knowledge base of information that walks them through how to solve problems and that may be done on the telephone or it may be done over the internet, a combination of the two. But what we're also talking about is using that knowledge base to assess training needs of staff so that those staff that are having challenges using of staff, so that those staff that are having challenges using technology as it's being deployed can be given additional training, so that the college gets full advantage of the technology it's acquiring. So in Phase 1, which is what I think the resolution is about tonight, of this, which would begin quickly, since we're on a tight timeline and run to the end of the calendar year, we, I wanted to share with you the outcomes that we have, that we will contract for. We actually contract for outcomes. We're not an hourly-based consulting firm. This is a fixed-fee bid that we've submitted. All expenses are included, all of our staff is included, and it doesn't matter how many staff it requires us to provide to deliver these outcomes, we're contracting for outcomes. To my knowledge, we're the only information technology firm that does that. Why do we do that? Because I used to be a Vice President of a community college, and I could not withstand cost overruns on my projects. I just couldn't do it. There's no more money. There's no place to take money from, and so I had to live within my budget. We, that's one of the things that Dynamic Campus has always done and been committed to, is we contract for deliverables that are measurable. We agree on a way to measure them, and we deliver those and get paid for them. We don't just get paid for coming and spending time on campus. So in this period of time, the website would be up and running, email would be in production, Texas Southmost-owned email, Voice Over Internet Protocol, phone system would be deployed and ready for students, faculty, and staff to use. Cloud data center would be selected. We help negotiate contracts and reduce the prices of that. Data center communications will be fully operational. We actually will deal with the authentication and security issues that Mr. Lewis referred to earlier. The learning management system will be up and ready. This is important, because when you hire faculty, they have to have a place to put their courseware, their syllabi, and their presentations, and other documents they want to share, that they need to be, that needs to be ready for the faculty to use. The administrative system will be selected, not implemented. It takes a while to implement these things. Library system options will be identified, might be selected if the college wants to select that early. The college may want to defer the selection, to defer the expense of acquiring that a little bit longer. The entire infrastructure will be planned and documented for on-campus, as well as the cloud-based services, and the Help Knowledge Base System to support users will be selected. And let me share with you the other phases of this, so you maybe get an idea of the magnitude of what we're addressing. This, these, the phases we're moving into now are not what I think you're being asked to approve tonight. These are just things that the college will need to do to hit its goal of opening doors to students fall of 2013, and then continuing to meet the technology goals over time that were already laid out. One is develop a five-year technology plan. First, we need to know what the technology is, so we can plan it out and plan how to use it. Create a capital plan for how you're going to fund and acquire the IT solutions that you want and need. Establish an IT governance structure. How are you going to manage this technology as you move forward? And how are you going to allow for constituent input and constituent participation? And critical to all of this is building a training plan for faculty and staff. It does little good to have wonderful technology if people can't use it, so, and we can use the technology to deliver the training. So, for example, a learning management system, which would be used to deliver courses, can also be used to train faculty and staff. And then project plans need to be created for additional Phase 2 efforts, including reading the environment for the Go Live event of the administrative systems, building out and configuring those systems to function as the college wishes, developing, and this is a big issue, developing a way and actual programs to move data from the existing Datatel system that you share with University of Texas Brownville, and taking your students out, their academic history, and moving it. And there's no margin for error in this. You really can't make a mistake in moving transcript data. And continue to enhance user security and authentication protocols. As your student body grows and they use these services, security needs to be present and available for them, to protect them and the data that's there, but they also need to be given access privileges and rights to use it. And that takes some planning. Before we go live, we actually do extensive software functionality tests. We test and model. We make sure that we never come up with a product that does not work. So we put a lot of time in testing. And we also do the same thing to establish the integrity of the data that's migrated, because we can't make a mistake in that. And here's some outcomes from Phase 2. I won't run through these again, because I talked about which each one of them is, except for the business intelligence solution. It's important, if you want to manage, if you want to be a data-driven institution, that business intelligence be built out along with the solutions as they're implemented. And too often, we go in and we implement a business intelligence solution after the fact, and you have the rather unique opportunity to do it upfront, which will allow you not just to generate management reports, not just to send the data that you are mandated to send to the coordinating board in Texas, not just to the federal government for financial aid and other reporting purposes, but you'll actually be able, as a college administrator, to monitor your progress every day, the same way you're looked at externally. And then you can add to that key performance indicators, which I know you're looking at, to measure the performance of your students, and to help you intervene and promote student success when intervention is warranted. And one of these business intelligence systems properly configured will actually alert you when a student is not making the progress that they should make, and allow you to take some, make some, introduce some strategy to help the student, save the student, and help them and make them successful. Faculty staff, staff training, there's a number of areas in this. One is using the administrative system, but behind the scenes, there's some other things, like the website content management. One of the things that we suggest to colleges is that you get people, staff, involved in what the content on the website is, but in order to do that, you have to have a structured way that allows them to use it and introduce or suggest content for, without making them learn an awful lot to do it. So with the right web content management system in the background, individuals on campus can actually create things in Microsoft Word that then end up being published after approval on the website, so they don't have to learn a new technology to do it. And finally, at the end of Phase 2, this isn't the end of everything, but it's a big milestone. It's Go Live in time for all the things that have to happen for fall of 2013. These events really have to happen well in advance of fall 2013. Financial aid has to be up by March, because students need to get aid in order to attend. Your course schedule needs to be built, so that you can assign courses to faculty in probably by the latest April. Your learning management system needs to be in place by the time you hire faculty, so they can begin to develop their courses. All these things have to be structured over time, and so starting in February, running all the way up through August, there's one Go Live event after another, all culminating in being ready for classes. There's some other phases here, but Dr. Tesero, if it's okay, I'm going to move on.
Sure.
And because...
Yeah, the main thing tonight, what we wanted to do is share with you all the work that needs to be done over the next several months, in order for us to be ready to go, as he said, go live and ready for the fall 13. I do want to say that I am truly appreciative of this firm's willingness to work with us. As you know, we are in a very unique situation. We're starting up, and yet all our funds are basically somewhere else. And so our challenge is to implement a technology system with limited resources right now, so that we can get started and start doing what we do and getting the money that's supposed to be flowing into TSC. And so I really appreciate their willingness to work with us. I think you wouldn't find many firms, Mr. Chairman, Board members, that would be willing to do this. I think part of it is their excitement about the fact that we are unique, and that we have an opportunity together in partnership with this firm to build an incredibly wonderful, state-of-the-art organization that I think will be well-recognized across the country, most particularly here in Texas. Because as you know, the most, one of the most critical elements that's coming here in Texas is accountability, you know, it's completion. We're going to be set and ready to go from the day we open the campus, and I can't think of any better place to be than in that position when we get going. So I'm excited. Like I said, I want to, really, I want to thank them, because they didn't have to work with us in these kinds of phases that we have here. We had to do it this way, because of where we are right now as an institution. And they're willing to do it, so I really appreciate that. And so we strongly recommend that you approve our recommendation to move forth with this most important effort. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify on what you were saying. Because of the nature of our situation and the transition, what ends up happening is, we pay for these services through the partnership, but we are going to be paying through the date where we become live. So that's why there is redundancy here, but we have to, we have to be prepared.
Absolutely. And this is a wonderful approach to doing it, rather than us spending millions of dollars for equipment and facilities and space and everything. I was like Chet said, renovating space, because everything right now, in terms of, the firm came in and did some work on their own prior to us coming forth today. And we found a lot, found out everything we had to find out about the infrastructure here on this campus. What we found was that the majority, actually all of the true systems are housed at the UTV buildings. We have the infrastructure running all over the campus, but they have housed the technology systems in their buildings. So that means we would have to either share with them, or go and create our own. And by doing this approach, we don't have to invest all those millions of dollars that you would invest in hardware. I think it's wise, a wise approach for us to take, and good use of our monies.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Comment?
You want to go to the mic?
You're welcome.
Please.
We need to install your microphone there at your location.
Yeah.
Just one quick point I wanted to make that needs to be captured, I think, is that I've been involved in two situations where we migrated from an existing administrative system to another at two different colleges. The greatest hidden cost that is not recognized almost all the time is the cost of moving personnel from one mindset to another, the amount of time it takes, the grief, the opposition, even undermining. It's, there are so many metaphors that have been used, but it's so, so costly. But in a lot of ways, we're asking employees to switch from driving a standard to an automatic, which is not a perfect metaphor, because it's too easy. That's too easy. There's another metaphor that I heard used, that we're asking employees that have been used to walking to work, we're now going to ask them to swim to work. And think about that. It's, you know, I don't want to go in the water, I'm too used to walking, what if I drown? I know, it's almost extreme, but that, if you figure the hours and hours that are spent in the training and convincing people to do so. And then finally, the best metaphor I think I've ever heard, and captures it, is that it's asking people that have been saying a certain prayer to say, don't say that one anymore, learn this one. It's almost that emotional in so many ways. I just wanted to make sure we captured that, that sometimes that doesn't go on a board. That is what, to me, makes the situation so, so unique, that we literally don't have to do that. We're avoiding probably millions of dollars in 10 years to not have to go through that. You would think that something wouldn't linger for five, or six, or seven years, but it does, when you ask people to make that kind of transition. We're asking, we'll ask our new faculty to become masters of the learning universe, you know, just can't teach by lecturing anymore. There's a lot to be done. What really excites me about this system is the student success, that's the information that's embedded, that we will be able to come to you on a monthly basis and tell you where our students are involving, where are they coming from in developmental education, what are our graduation rates, what are our transfer rates, and so on and so on. It's just, I just wanted to say that from the academic and student services side of the house. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions, any comments? Since our timeline is very narrow, 2013 will become a live, the fall of 2013, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How long would it take to implement at least a Phase 1 part of this, or your experience is concerned? I know that this is a very unique situation, not only for us. I wouldn't say unique, because we're going back to traditional junior college. That's not unique. What was unique was before. Today, we're, I think we're a traditional junior college.
Community college.
The relationship that we can begin together as your company and hopefully work with us, and you're taking us coming out of the womb here, and we're going to be crawling and walking pretty fast here, and hopefully we can engage in this relationship in the future as we move forward, and trust that we have efficiency, because I will underscore the word efficiency. And I think that our students deserve it, our faculty and our staff deserve efficiency. We want to be successful, and your company has been successful in the past, and hopefully you can bring that success to us and work in with us. But I don't care what kind of systems you have, it all boils down to the human touch. And whoever manages these systems is the one that makes it, as far as I'm concerned, efficient. So my question has to do with people, and the people that we hire, whether it's local people or people that come from the outside. It has to be people that know the business and people who are inviting and caring, because the bottom line is, efficiency has to do with people, and customer service, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what I'd like to have here.
Well, thank you for the question. I think you're right on target. We oftentimes say we're a technology firm, but we're really a change agent. That's really what we do. We spend more time on the change part of it, the adoption of new technology, how to use it, what are the benefits of it, than we really do on the technology itself. And that requires a lot of staff development and a lot of faculty development. We partner with the folk that we hire locally. We partner by bringing people in, and we actually develop a staff development plan for each individual, each individual that we hire, and we match them up with one of our mentors, one of the people who know higher education and know the technology that we're implementing, and we develop that person. It builds commitment on their part, because someone is taking an interest in them. It gives them a solution when they need help, and it encourages them to learn even more. And we've been very successful with that. In our business, we sometimes go in and there are 30 or 40 people that are outsourced to us in one hour, and we have to win those people over, and they do not want us there. You're not in this situation, which is good for you and good for us. We do win them over. It takes two or three months, but when they see we really care about them, and we really want to develop them to support the institution, then they partner with us and we move forward. And we blend with the college community. We don't wear Dynamic Campus shirts. We, if the Texas Southmost gives us permission, we carry business cards that say we're with the college, not with the company. We do everything on behalf of the college. And we actually, what you see tonight in this presentation from me, and I know you don't know me very well, but I will be the executive lead on this account. You don't get salespeople and then delivery people with us. That doesn't happen. We all actually deliver. We all have responsibilities for making our colleges successful. We want that responsibility, and, you know, we're looking forward, if you approve this, to working with you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Lewis, on the financial side. It's a big, it's a big budget line item. I imagine you'd already planned for it, but, and then, that's the first question, if you had planned for it. And the second one would be, once we're implementing Phase 2, they were talking about the fact that financial... about the fact that financial aid will be hopefully ready by March of 2013. Would we be able to start processing financial aid for students, TSC students, that will still be taking UTB instruction in the summer on the financial aid side or do some soft startups on that? And the financial part of the question is, if we start doing that, then we don't have to pay our partner for those services and we can recover those funds, and it'll be a faster transition on the financial side? Or have we not discussed that yet?
Hopefully, my answer will address both your questions. The reason we're addressing this Phase One is because there are some discussions that we still need to have in regard to the partnership agreement. And so this will get us started. It'll start identifying the things we need to do to make change, to make sure we're making headway, to making sure we're achieving our goals. And then as we go through the summer and have our discussions with UT System, we will make adjustments to the partnership agreement. And those adjustments will allow us to do the other phases and move forward, but again, we have to have those taken care of. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we will be up and running for financial aid, for admissions, for student enrollment, for advising, for learning management systems, all of those type of items. But if we wait till we finish those negotiations and then talk about changes in the partnership agreement, that could be summer or maybe even late, early fall, and by then, it's going to be too late. So that's why we need to proceed with this phase. And yes, we do anticipate that this would be costly. If you were to look at a brand-new student system, I've seen student systems in a full enterprise package that addressed all your accounting and financial aid needs and purchasing, et cetera, it could be 10, 15 to 25 million in total. We're looking at trying to make sure we do everything as cost-effective as possible, look for innovative ideas where instead of possibly having email server housed within the campus, to look at, looking at free service for some aspects of the business that we do. So we're trying to find as many innovative and leveraged technology ideas that are out there to move forward. So I think that the proposal we're bringing forward and the recommendation we're bringing forward will allow us to move forward and achieve that. But again, we still have some budgetary issues we have to address, but we can't specifically talk about them until we hit that stage.
We have had some preliminary discussions with the UT System, so in regard to transition agreements. So it's not that, you know, they know that we're coming and we're going to be working together over the summer.
So basically, we're looking that we can phase some of those transitions.
There are possibilities of phasing a lot of things, absolutely. And we have, like I said, had some preliminary discussions of that. And we're, on both sides, I think, we're looking forward to getting there. And this really is one huge step for us. So this is, this is one of many steps that are coming forth now that are really very, very, very direct activities that are going to lead us to where we want to be in fall of 13. It's just going to get more exciting and more, more exciting, almost every day, to tell you the truth. I'm just ecstatic about this. I really am. Because this is one of the first major steps toward becoming fully independent.
I think also the exciting part is the fact that we're starting from scratch and we can have the most modern systems, and we don't have any pushback from someone who tells us, we've always been doing it this way. Well, I don't think so because we're just starting, so.
That's right.
On the budget, is it already in the line item it needs to be on? Or are you going to come back to us to move some funds?
If you approve this, we're going to bring forth a budget amendment to address whatever's approved and whatever Dr. Tesero negotiates. I think we asked for up to a million in the motion. So that's something we'll bring to you at the next meeting.
But we do have the funds available.
Yes, yes, we do.
That's why we wanted to be sure that we had the money, and that's why we're asking for a million, up to a million, because we know that that will carry us through, and we don't have to be worried right now between now and the end of the year.
And I think the important point, and I thank you for putting that in the proposal, the fact that you wanted a fixed fee, and that makes us more comfortable knowing it's a fixed fee. And then being an outcome-based contract, we like that too because the state is going to expect the same from us. They're going to make us performance and outcome-based, so that's important.
I'm almost envious of your position because as an entrepreneur myself, and I think it's an exciting time for you to be with us. I was also on the suffer end of it some years ago, a long time ago, when I worked, I worked for WASSA Education Systems, and we sold software to BISD and LISD. But the integral part was the training, and I was the leader there, and everybody came to me with a palm, saying, dealing with one person is very important. I hope we can do that with you. Because when we have to deal with the trainers and then the one that does the sale, and then there wasn't still some material, then it gets complicated, and I have been there. So I hope that nobody else has to deal with anybody but you and that it stops with you.
It will stop with me, and I think you're right on target. It's the human side of this that makes it successful. And this is such a unique opportunity. I haven't done the direct management of these kinds. I designed them. I haven't done the direct management in about three years of these kinds of initiatives. I'm choosing this one because it is a special chance that doesn't come along. It's never come along in my career. I've always had to change from something else, and this is just a wonderful opportunity to do it in the way that benefits the student the most. So thank you very much.
Be careful what you ask for.
Do you have any more questions?
So it's a daunting task. It's a daunting task. Having involved with one major hospital system, going with, turning on, going live with electronic medical records in their whole hospital, huge task. And having different campuses go live is a very challenging thing. And then in the VA, switching over from one electronic system housed one place to another, huge task. So this is, maybe it's better that you stream the startup. So it's very challenging.
I'd like to thank the staff for all the work they did on this research, and I also agree with them, the fact that doing this in-house doesn't make sense for a startup. If it were established, if it was an established system, it'd be different, like the saying in Spanish, "Al zapatero sus zapatos." The shoemaker should be making shoes, so the educator should be educating. And the fact that we're doing it this way, I think, makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate the work on it. So then, I guess we're looking for a motion to negotiate a contract with Dynamic Campuses to provide information, technology, consulting, and outsourcing services for Phase One and to authorize Dr., to authorize TSC President to do all the needed, and that's, all that is, I'm sorry, to authorize the TSC President to do all things necessary to execute a contract not to exceed $1 million.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Torres.
Second.
Second by Ms. Garza. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're excited.
Now the hard work begins.
Yes.
The final item is, the next meeting date is May 31st, Thursday, May 31st, 2012, and we're looking for a motion for a German.
A motion.
I've got a second, I've got a motion by Ms. Gauza, second by Mr. Mendez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned.
A motion to adjourn.